Okay. That little meeting was about, I'll tell you a little bit about what we've done. A little bit about what we've done. We came up with a personnel committee, which was Ryan and Ann and myself. And we reviewed eighteen resumes and put them in a ranked order based on a sheet that I did a draft and then Ann massaged it. We all agreed on the sheet. We came up with our top four picks. Tanya put together an oral board that was made up of people, four people that had thirty years' experience basically each. And we had somebody who was a chief of police, somebody who was a county administrator, someone who was a borough administrator, and I lost the other thing.
Solicitor.
Oh, York County, and the attorney solicitor. So they reviewed the resumes and they came out with the same top pick that we did and the same second choice that we did. So that was kind of encouraging. So we just, we are going to vote right now on making an offer to this gentleman. He has a BA in business from the University of Pittsburgh with a 3.8 GPA. He's on the dean's list for four years. He's a borough manager with thirteen years of experience with a $6 million budget and eight employees. He has a website design and management. He also has experience with rec. He has a Class B CDL. And because he was interested in wastewater, even though he didn't have to do it, he went out and got, he's now a licensed wastewater treatment plant operator. He has his AE 1232 and 4 license. He's a certified playground safety inspector, a property maintenance code inspector, and he is also familiar and vice chairman in York County for the MS4 stormwater treatment, which we're going to be under probably within the next couple of years. So that gives us a leg up there too. So we were hoping to get a walk-on candidate. And even though we know nobody can replace Tanya, we think that this comes pretty close. So we entertain a motion to make an offer which would be within budget.
Will you make a motion for that within budget?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pos. My vote is aye. And I'll try to do that tomorrow first thing. She did that. Okay, I gave you a handout at last meeting that was playground equipment. And Tanya had come up with about $35,000, I think $36,000 for donation for more advanced playground equipment that would be for the thirteen to eighteen-year-old crowd or even mom and dad. And we also got an estimate from Donnie for the putting in the landscape timbers and the bedding and the mulch, the rubberized mulch. And that was $10,334. So what I would like to ask council to do is to approve, I think we've got all the costs covered. What I would like council to do is approve the manpower. And we actually don't need all borough manpower. We actually have a builder, Berchantine, in the area who has said he would loan us two guys. So we'll have a total of four, two of our guys, two of his guys to put this in. But I would like council to approve the manpower and putting in the footings and installing the equipment. The equipment will be delivered to the playground and then it would have to be put up and probably put together, I'm sure.
Does it have to be put up for a bit?
Not under coastlines. You didn't page your other playground.
Oh, I didn't know that was coastlines.
It's coastlines, yeah.
Andy, this is in addition to the playground we have there now.
Yeah, well, except it's going to cost a lot less. But yeah.
It's going to be at the same general location, same property.
It'll be, yeah, if you look at the playground the way it is now, if you're looking at it from up here, it'll, the playground's here. The Boy Scouts are putting in a doggone pit next to that, about ten feet off of that to give room to cut grass and whatnot. And then about ten feet over in front of the trees will be this area. It'll be, I think it's sixty by sixty-eight area. It'll have a swing set. It'll have a climbing area where you could climb up. It's actually a steel cable that's wrapped so that it can't be cut. And it'll also have some spinner things.
Is this intended for different age groups?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we basically put up a playground and we decided that it was only for twelve and under. So this is kind of to encourage. Yeah, yeah, I think, did everybody get this?
Yeah.
So yeah, sixty by sixty-eight. And it'll have the overhead, what I used to call monkey bars. And it'll have the swing set, the net, cargo net, thank you. And then also three spinners, which you can stand on and they spin around kind of thing. So yeah, I think it'll be neat and it'll maybe get the kids to gravitate, the older kids to gravitate away from the young kids playground over to this playground. And they'll have their own little space.
Was the rec council involved in this or is this just?
I presented it to rec council, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I asked, actually asked rec council for a location. They didn't get back to me, so I just picked a spot. It's the most logical spot though, so it doesn't interfere with the field.
It doesn't interfere with our future plans for phase one, two, three?
No, no, it's going to be sixty-eight across.
I can't picture where it's going to be.
If the playground's here now and the circle thing there, parking lot thing, and then the doggone pit goes here, it'll be right here.
Is that where soccer field is?
No, the soccer field is up here.
Gotcha.
I made a motion that we approved the, as you asked, like a personnel settlement.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos. My vote is aye. Thank you.
Can the microphone be turned on over here? Microphone, there's no.
And you can't hear me?
You, but her, in between Tanya and her.
She turned her off.
Turn off.
Closer to you, it may sound better.
All right. Okay, then the, we also had some questions when Ryan and I went to rec council about about things that rec council needs to do to get approved. And we don't have to vote on this tonight. I just kind of wanted to pass it up and discuss it a little bit. I think there's two pages, I'm sorry. You get two pages?
There's two pages. All the way down. Last page, all the way down.
Anyway, this is a direction to the recreation board from the New Freedom Borough Council. And it's dated, I think today. And what this does is they asked what we expected of them because we had a little bit of upset regarding the playground and whatnot. Did I give you one?
No.
You didn't want to know, that's okay. I can just.
Does Ryan have one?
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Okay, so anyway, so basically what I told them at the meeting that we had was that what we're trying to get is a variety of quality programs for all ages and abilities at a reasonable price. We also discussed the rec director and that the rec director would be self-sustaining after four years. The rec director's going to report to the borough manager and will work with the recreation board to implement their programs and other programs. And for approval of programs, there's a procedure in the borough code that needs to be followed. And we also, I'm saying that the borough manager and recreation director must be informed of all new programs following the vote and two business days prior to advertising the program. And the borough manager and rec director must always be, of course, kept informed of program issues if somebody gets hurt or whatnot. There's also a thing in here for a community center use policy. When rec conducts a program, the rate's $15 an hour. When rec or the rec director sponsors or allows a vendor in the community centers, $30 an hour and private companies have to be negotiated. And use for the community center for an event, the rental fee should be determined by the borough manager. That would be like the ferry festival if they want to have a party after their, after their outdoor part of their activities. And so, and we also, they also had asked a question about more improvements in March Goodfellow Park or anywhere for that matter. And what this says is any improvements to parks will be taken in small bites. A firm fixed price budget should be established. And it's expected that rec will raise about half the cost of planned improvements and the other half will be matched by council or a grant or a sponsor. And exceptions may be granted by council. So they wanted to do something and they didn't have the money. We could still approve to do it. We thought it was in the best interest of the citizens of New Freedom. So you can take that with you and maybe we could vote on it next time? Does anyone have any questions on it? They also asked about a field policy and that's kind of the last page. I listed all the fields. We have to come up with some kind of a field policy. Right now, there's people who would like to use Weathersfield and I know it's Mason-Dixon soccer only, but maybe we need to come off of that policy or we at least need to consider allowing other groups to use the field. And there's also some other fields that we should come up with policies on. So if someone wants to take a stab at that, I'll take a stab at it too. You know, I know, I schedule all the fields everywhere, so I'll take a stab at it and see what I can come up with.
I'm curious about the background as to how Weathersfield became solely Mason-Dixon.
Mason-Dixon did an agreement years ago that they would maintain and pay for everything out there and they do. They put the gates up, they pretty much do everything out there. They have Kemble and they have, they pay for the porta potts.
Okay. The only other thing they asked was the porta pop at March Goodfellow Park is up by the tennis courts and they wanted it moved down by the playground. Given the activities at night, I'm not sure that putting a porta pop down by where the kids hang out is a good thing, but can we, I don't know what everybody thinks about.
I think more people are down there, so I think we should put it the point of use.
Okay, so maybe move it somewhere in between the tennis courts and the?
Where? Where did I move it down? Go that way?
It's up by, up towards the tennis courts. It's probably like twenty feet, twenty feet away from the tennis courts, I guess. And they wanted to move it down closer to the playground so that little kids, you could say to your child, go to the, you know, go ahead, go potty and they don't get out of your sight. I think it's a good idea. I don't think we need to vote on that. We just kind of moved it.
We could give it a call.
Yeah.
Because they'll simply be removing it.
I'm sorry?
They'll simply be removing it.
Oh, yeah, that's true, yeah. Okay, another issue. Mary Ann has people, and Kim will attest, that we have people on the tennis court all the time skating. We don't really want to build a skate park and I understand that. And even though we've been trying to get something for skating for a long time, I understand the reasoning behind it. However, if we built a path for pickleball and didn't bother putting a sign on it that said no skating, we might be able to kill two birds with one stone.
Would be a concrete path then, right?
No, I think it could be asphalt. It'd be easy to repair.
No, but it wouldn't be any of the fancy waterway thing, right?
No, 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 no. No, it would just be an asphalt.
Yeah, that was voted in the estimate that Andy got before. They called it something special, but it was.
It's just, it's just an asphalt. It's just a, can you hit your mic, Ryan?
I didn't at all. Yeah, that was all held behind in that estimate that was given out, I think, last month.
It's 12:05.
Still adhering, isn't it, from?
No, I don't think we will.
No.
I thought they went somewhere else.
They didn't, they went to Hillbilly Township.
Went to Hillbilly Township, so.
That's not the over and done one.
It is, it is.
They're not interested in raising money. They're going.
Yeah, I don't think they want to raise.
They don't want to raise any money, so that's, that's finished.
But I, you know, I don't, I don't think we should do it this year just because it's going, heading into winter now and I don't think it'll get a lot of use anyway. But I think we should think about that. Mary Ann would, thought that was a good idea to go ahead and put a pad down and then the kids would go skate on that. And it would save us the thousands of thousands of dollars that we put into the tennis court and might only cost a couple hundred a patch here and there of the dumb cracks or whatever.
Does that change our insurance in any way?
No, because it's not a skate park. What do we call it? It's a pickleball pad. Oh. If they want to put lines on it and play pickleball, they can do that too, you know? And then if the kids want to skate there at night, I'm not going to say they can't. Have any trouble with that?
No, I mean, it was a pickleball pad and people are skating on it.
That's right. Just it'd be impossible to keep them on.
They just can't ride their skateboards up to Bunker Hill.
Well, it won't be at Bunker Hill. I'm going to put it down by the, oh, I was thinking we would put it down by the, where the entrance is to March Goodfellow, where the parking lot used to be. Down at that end in front of the man's stand on the other side. And that would be a good place for dude trucks to park, like when you had the carnival. It'd be a multi-use kind of a thing. We're going to put down a good, good basis down.
Close to where the old coke shop was?
Yeah, yeah, right in there.
Okay.
So it'd be away from the field, the soccer field, but it'll be where you could ride your skateboard down and almost ride right onto it. Not that I'm encouraging that.
But we would put up a sign that says something, you know, if you participate in pickleball or other activities here, you're on risk, right?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, I'm on type of that. All right, so I'll bring that up sometime in the future. I just wanted to mention that because Mary Ann wants to try to get the people off the tennis court.
So have the repairs been completed there at the tennis court?
Yeah. Maybe it's other than that.
We still do not have signs on every gate.
Which gates are you missing?
Okay, it's going to be the south northeast gate and the southwest gate. Has nothing on it at all. Donnie told me he was going to put two of the old ones that he took off back there and they're not there. We do have new ones on the, on the basketball court, which I appreciate because we had a big incident last week where we had seventeen skaters and bikers on the basketball court and a kind of a fight because kids wanted to play basketball. And so the police went down and cleared them out.
Okay. If they just had a pad. Opening the community center. I know Kim has some information on electrostatic fibers. And I'd asked Ann about that and I'm not sure, they're still not really approved, correct?
The CDC has not approved it, so, I mean.
Not for large areas. I mean, they use them.
They use them on airplanes, they use them on buses, the subway.
Large buildings. If you go in there, it was, now I'm blanking on my three legs.
Facebook pages.
No, if you go into, was it FDA that has to approve all?
The FDA.
FDA has to approve all of the items that are used.
Yeah, chemicals are approved by FDA. I found that online.
And they, on that site, it said that the D fibers were not approved for large spaces.
All right, so what are we thinking? We're still in the pandemic stage. We still have to clean, right, every, every time it's been, it gets used by anybody?
I think our numbers are going up as far as cases in our area. And I did have occasion to talk with senior citizens center and they are in no hurry for it. And I don't know what, if we have anybody scheduled.
We don't.
To the end of the year.
Everything's canceled.
Then I guess we should tangle it.
Is there somebody asking for a unit?
No.
I've gotten questions about volleyball.
Yeah.
Volleyball and then, of course, pickleball asked a while ago, but that was not recently. And then the rec council is also looking for their indoor tennis program.
Yeah.
If that's the case, how are they going to handle it cleaning? I don't believe you can trust a group that rents it to clean it. I had to clean this room today in the, in the hangup while yous were going. So who are you going to get to clean and sanitize everything? That seems to be the big issue.
I mean, if Mary Ann wants to take it on.
I mean, I think the big issue is that they're doing the hallway, they're doing the toilet, they're doing the restrooms.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I wish there was a easier way we could, we could get this over. There's enough, not to say there's enough people, but there's definitely people out there looking to, to use it. Things that have been missing in the past.
Yeah, we haven't had any calls. Well, I mean, the thing you could say, I guess, is if someone from rec wants, wants to take over and put in a cleaning, it's $324 to clean it every time somebody uses it. And we can't really afford it, you know?
No, not for every group. If they do, multiple age groups, you'd have to do it between them.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I have a question about the community center. Is it going to be open for voting then on?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we'll clean it after.
Yeah, it's actually going to be cleaned before.
Yeah, before and after.
The day before and it's going to be cleaned next morning.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll table the community center for sports. The senior center has asked, the senior center has asked for a year lease and I, I'm going to go ahead with that.
They've been informed of that.
I'm sorry?
They had their meeting before us.
Right.
So they've been informed that we're going to.
Yeah, so, so we're good with that. I'll bring this up. Berchantine.
I think we bring up that right now.
Okay. And what about the gas pump? I think we really need to talk about that again before we.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, then I'll just leave this to you. Okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question on the malignant accounts. Because that came up in our, our first meeting. So how much more is this than it used to be?
Well, what it is, it's different people. That's the big thing. A lot of it's different people. We run anywhere forty to fifty, but what we're noticing is people that have never worn it. A lot of them have called and made payment arrangements. But we did actually have two houses go for sale in October.
So it came down?
It came down because two of them went for sale. And we got that money?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I should approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos. My vote is aye. Public comment. Scout PAC 24.
How's it going? We were here seven months ago or so, before COVID hit. And talked to you guys about a free library, which our boys, at the time were Cub Scouts, now they're Boy Scouts, they crossed over. But talked about building a free library to put up somewhere on borough property. So this is the end result. We had a lot of stuff donated. The entire structure is made of cedar and mahogany and then has a copper roof on top. Now, I mean, some of the door, of course, plexiglass, a little shelf on the inside. We, of course, have plenty of books for it as well. The post that it's on is a cedar post, which we also are willing to provide. And we'd love to finish off the install if the borough will allow it on a piece of property, obviously, on by you guys. I am a state licensed contractor in Pennsylvania and Maryland, so I'd be more than happy just working with you guys to at least get utilities marked and then have our boys come back out and dig a hole and install it. We do also have an option. We prefer to install it in sand. That way it's removable. Not that we ever want you to take it down, but if you're ready to take it down for a future project or something like that, it could easily be taken down. So this is the end result. We were hoping, we'd love to have it installed in the most, probably one of the most prominent places. We'd love to stop next to the turning track where the Christmas tree is. I don't know what that park is called, but we'd love to see it there if possible. But this is the end result and what we had promised you guys seven months ago, we would have seen you a couple of months ago. It's been in my garage for a while now, so I just want to get it out.
Will it have like a little plaque on it that says Scout PAC 24?
Yeah, we were thinking of doing a small plaque that would just say, you know, like graciously donated to New Freedom Borough in appreciation and then have just PAC 24 probably, Den One, which was our individual group, and then probably the boys names listed on it. But something small, you know, probably introduced by yay. We were thinking maybe on the bottom of the door here. It would all be, you know, weather resistant plastic materials, so it's never going to require maintenance. The finish on this is just tung oil, so it's, it's super easy to maintain. I plan on probably dying in this town, so I have no problems on an annual basis coming out and putting a foot oil on it. It's, it's pretty simple to do. But this is what we got put together and when we, the boys crossed over earlier this year, honestly, right when COVID hit, we had the PAC also donate a bunch of books. So I didn't bring the books tonight, but we have plenty of books that go inside of it. And I'm more than happy to keep, keep books supplied in it if they, you know, grow legs walk off and don't come back.
When you get permission from Heritage?
You have a tough heart. You should make a motion to.
What I did, I kind of make a motion.
It might have been somebody else, but I, there was another scout who came through and we talked about having it done by the, I can't think of the name of.
The railroad trail, yeah, the Maryland line. When we originally came, it was myself and my son, Trent.
Yes.
And once we got into this and started building it and of course, me being a builder and being able to get a lot of this stuff donated, we really didn't want it to be down there at the end of the trail. Not that that's a bad spot, but it's super nice. It's got copper, mahogany. Not that bad things happen on the end of the trail, but you know, there's more prone to mischief, things like that. We're all teenagers at one point, I know. I would have done stuff like that at the end of the trail, hanging out with my friends.
Yeah, I thought that was in the same group, yeah.
Would this, would this be elevated somehow when it's?
Yeah, yeah, this is just a model right here now. So I have a six-foot tall post.
Okay.
So this guy is ideally mounted at about forty-six inches, the bottom of it, above ground, so that a child that can read can easily open it and get a book out. And then, of course, it's accessible for adults. It's not going to be this tall, but just imagine, you know, if you're a child, the door's about yay. So, but we would use guys, honestly, that we, we researched it and found, not that there is common practices or preferred standards for these things, but we found the average height and rolled with that. And that's where we found the plans for it as well.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
Don't you, don't have to be down with the child, okay?
Beautiful.
Thanks, sir. What do we do with the other one that's there?
Well, the other one's down by the train station.
Okay, so it means it's physically away from you. Okay.
Yeah, the other will be distant neighbor. Was there a particular location in Freedom Green?
I mean, anywhere would be fine with us. It's just a really nice spot, obviously. It's trees there, you know, a lot of stuff happens in that area. It doesn't bother us, I don't think. What's that? Yeah, but it, it wouldn't bother us one way or the other where it was in that.
Guys didn't know if you had something in mind. We have a question in the back.
Wouldn't it make sense to put it near the playground?
That's what we were just talking about, yeah. That's what we were just talking about, yeah. Actually, it's really not a bad idea because there's going to be picnic tables, there's a picnic table up there, people can take a book out and read it and, you know, and yeah.
There'll be kids there.
There'll be kids there.
I'm sorry, he'll be back at a passy park.
Oh, not this one. Where they're putting the new growth in?
Yeah, they're putting the picnic tables and the benches.
Picnic tables and benches.
Yeah, and where exactly, yeah, from here on the trail we'd be talking about? Cause we'll, we'll take, obviously, all this back and sit down with the boys, make sure everybody is comfortable with it and then we gotta, if you guys approve it, get our people together, at least the kids, to help us all.
I think it'd probably be better to wait till they plant the trees, which is next week. So I mean, you could still do it probably the end of this.
Well, the ground freeze is, yeah, yeah, which we got until probably, honestly, mid-December before we really go hard freeze and you can't take.
Yeah, so I think we can approve it for there and they could coordinate with Tanya on the exact location and Donnie maybe get it down and put a spray mark on the ground or something.
I was gonna say, that and, and whatever utilities we need to, or mark.
Oh, yeah, it's true. Well, they're putting trees in, so I think we're all okay.
So everything are already marked, so it's already done.
So in relation, because we're not, we're not a hundred percent where yours, where exactly are we, where are we talking about? So you said, was it Cass Playground?
No, if you would go over here to this park, you're familiar with this park?
Yes, yes.
Walk down along the creek.
Okay.
And there, I'm Pennsylvania Dutch, it's creek. They're, they're planting trees and making a passive area that they're going to put some benches so you can sit there and also need the plantings. It's to be a quiet area, so if your children are.
Is that right before the Summit Grove entrance?
No, not that.
March Woodfell Park.
It's still in the good.
It's still in the park, but it's at the end of the park.
Yeah, it's still in the park. It's at the other end of the park.
So we should just keep it out for trees being installed, right?
They're installing them next week.
Okay, okay.
And then we'll be cutting a trail up through and putting in some benches, picnic tables.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a nice, nice spot to sit down and read.
Okay.
You've done a great job.
Thank you. They don't, don't, it's, the boys, believe it or not, I did the cutting, but they did the entire assembly, staining, everything on it, the nails, screws, all of it. I did let them cut trim pieces, but obviously some of the bigger stuff I had to do myself just to keep it safe, little fingers and saws don't mess, so. And it's bad liability.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Donation, yes, that we place that beautiful.
In the ground, trees, so we have a second donation.
And just for our reference, so we'll contact Tanya here in the next week or two, once the trees go in, and then we'll coordinate with you.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see activity down there next week.
And I'm happy to assist with marking of utilities. We deal with this, my, my company does, at least with this issue.
We got them to take care of.
Okay, thanks. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to talk about the VFW, the wreath program? You did, okay. I wonder, I wonder what I do.
I just had a quick, quick, I added that. With, with, with the people that congregate there at night, do we have to worry about securing something like that?
Well, I mean, yeah, probably, but I mean, you can only do what you can do. The, the other box has been left alone and it's been fine. So I'm, I'm just hoping that, you know, I guess we'll see. Yeah, I know, but I mean, what, what do you have to do? Just a quick one. The VFW is doing wreaths across America. It's VFW Post seventy-twelve and they need sponsors for their wreaths. What this does is it puts a, in our New Freedom Cemetery and also in another cemetery close by, it'll put a wreath on every grave. We're trying to get four hundred wreaths, they're trying to get four hundred wreaths. An individual sponsor is fifteen dollars and then they have different levels. And if you order by November thirty, for every two wreaths they order, they get a free one. So it kind of helps to reduce that. So I'll, I'll leave this up here and you can take a look at it.
It's not every grave, it's every military grave.
Yes, I'm sorry, every military grave. Does anyone have any questions about that? Reports, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, is there any other public comment?
Can I put on our borough website?
Sure. Should be, is it right? Just take a picture of it.
The link or something?
Yeah, we're allowed, right? Let folks know that it's there.
It's there, maybe the link to go for the city?
Yeah, it's a good idea. I think we're slowly getting some, some action or reaction with the state boards and the police. I've gotten a little bit more cooperation with the police department as I stand down in the middle of the alley, playground alley and wave them down. You know, we had a major, not a major incident, but an incident a couple of weeks ago. We had probably eight bikes and twelve skateboards on the basketball court and I called down and asked one of the officers to please inform the, the young gentleman that we do not allow bikes and skateboards and they were very obedient and left. Hopefully we'll continue to have some success now with the tennis courts. We did have about seven kids down on the bandstand. I guess it was last week, they decided to take one of our picnic tables apart, jump on it, broke it, and they were going to use it for a, for a ramp for their bikes and skateboards. Fortunately, I saw detective, one detective was coming by and I yelled him down and he, he called them. He cited them, they're going to, I think, repay. Am I correct? Paying for the damages that they did, you know, and then they took the, the pieces that broke off, threw it up in the rafters. Fortunately, we called them. And I think the one way we're going to get some things taken care of down there is to continue to do this and let the kids get the word out on their own that we're not going to put up with it, you know, that we've got a lot of money invested in that for them, you know. I know kids will be kids, but this is damage. And I, I think we're getting someplace. We're finally getting someplace, plus now it's getting colder. I think the kid, the people are down there all the time. It's the greatest thing I think that we've done since, since Burnell invented sliced bread, because the place is packed.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why are the lights on all night long?
Because we wanted to be able to see what's going on down there. They're LEDs and they do not take that much electricity. All the lights are not on.
But the sign says the park is closed, but the lights say on.
They're dusk to dawn lights, they do not light up the entire tennis court. Plus, the one light shines over on the playground equipment. So neighbors, which believe it or not, we have a neighborhood watch, they can see if there are kids down there on the, on the swings and the other playground equipment that shouldn't be there at twelve and one o'clock in the morning. Otherwise, you can't see anything. Believe it or not, you would think that it would invite the kids to be there because the lights are on. No, those kids that are out there at eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning do not want to be in the light. So it, it really keeps them from doing a lot of damage and, and being there. I mean, that's, that's been my, you know, we, it's been that way for a long time. They, they've been on there for five years.
I just see people on Facebook asking why they're on all night.
I saw somebody saying, well, yeah, it's, oh, this money, it's costing us, well, I don't think it costs that much for an LED light. I mean, you.
It'd be cost less than it did for the electric to the coat shack.
There you go.
Yeah, because they are LED and then definitely more energy if they, but they're any dusk to dawn.
Yeah, they're dusk to dawn and if somebody's down there and it's getting a little dark, you know, they can, they have to turn on the other lights so they can play tennis. All the lights are not on dusk to dawn, just, I think, four of them. So I, I, I think it's a deterrent, at least in my eyes, because all of us neighbors can look down there and see if there's kids down there, you know, at night, we call the police, can't see them, can't do anything about it. I don't, I have a, do you want me to do IGA during committees or do you want me to do that now under mayor? I, what are we going to do about the IGA? Well, Mike Sharkey, who's the mayor of Shrewsbury and is the chairman of the IGA committee, would like to present some things to council so that you know exactly where we are when it comes to finalizing IGA, which is very, going to be very important. And because he's the chairman, I've asked him to be here as my stead. Is there a copy to distribute to council?
Yeah, say, can we get a copy to look at?
No, there is no copy right now. That's what we're doing and we want your, some of your input, but what we're really looking at is what we're going to use to determine what each municipality is going to be responsible for and why. He has those numbers. He and Daryl Smuck from over at the police department have worked diligently on this for months. Unfortunately, yes, we've got people that are saying, well, this should have been done a long time ago. Well, yeah, but we had COVID and as much as other. Do you have something to hand us, at least a look at? I do. Oh, do you? Oh, okay. Okay. So thank you, Mike.
Maybe two of these down here. I only brought three of these, but this would be very green. So what I'm looking to do is just give more of an update on where the IGA committee is. A little bit of quick background is back in July of eighteen, all of the municipalities had essentially rescinded their withdrawal letters and said, hey, we're willing to stay in for five years. At that time, at the August police commission meeting, I had proposed an IGA committee meeting with representation from each member of municipality to look at, with five major goals. First major goal was, so everyone has said we'll be committed for five years, but the current agreement that everyone had just resigned still provided the ability to withdraw with basically a year plus two months or so of notice.
Can everybody hear? Cause we have an extra microphone.
So the idea was that everybody should lock in. I mean, a, a letter saying they're committed to five years is one thing, but a contract that keeps you in for five years is something a little bit different. We named that a primary objective. Second point was clarification on how PPU's are calculated and what the three-year usage and minimum obligation are as part that are currently listed in the agreement. Third is a proposed idea of a mechanism for major or minor changes. It's since really been dropped as an idea, there's no recommendation to continue with it. Fourth was a clarification of withdrawal obligations. Originally, when I presented this point, I said that there should be penalty or painful exit for any municipality that's looking to withdraw. Reality, and I want to thank groups, Mr. Merrill, for providing the term transparent exit. The current agreement talks about if a municipality is withdrawing, that they're on the hook for long-term financial obligations as well. But one thing is that those financial obligations are not very clear, which means that if there's a disagreement between the member municipalities and somebody that's withdrawing, that we're looking at an opportunity for the courts to solve it for us, which gets expensive. So that point four was really, has really become into clarifying withdrawal obligations. And the fifth would be to propose any additional changes that really strengthens our partnership as municipalities. So one of the biggest challenges was on the PPU calculation, what actually goes into obligated activity. In the current agreement, under Article Four, under allocation of costs, we switched from a formula that had several different components to it, not going to take the time to review it. We switched into something called PPU's, which are essentially based on time, but the, the crux of a PPU is that this really comes down to obligated activity. Obligated activity is any activity that police must respond to and handle. Clearly they, it's, it's not very specific, however, we spent some time looking at the activity and the time that the police track in their time tracking system. They identify all of the codes, and this is the sheet that I gave you here. There are, these are all of the activity codes that the police officers track when they track their time, they assign it to different municipalities. So in the column that's labeled include, if it has a one, that is actually obligated activity. For example, an ambulance response or an officer responds to an ambulance call. There are ambulance calls where officers don't respond. Same thing, similar with fire. If there is an assist or a criminal arrest or deterrent detail or court time, you can go down through the list. There's some activities down here that are primarily patrol in nature and those would be, those would have a code of two. So what we did is we looked at, going back to the year 2014, all of the activity and all the incidents that had an activity code or include code of one, which is basically obligated activity that a police officer must respond to. So for, and this is the one that I've handed to everyone, what do you have when you look at a three-year rolling average, which is something that we always use, all the contracts that we've had over the years as a police commissioner, there was always a, a three-year rolling average. What we switched to in 2017, we said it's a three-year rolling average, but it's set where there's a minimum obligated, minimum number of units that each municipality must purchase is recalculated every two years. So what we'd like to change in that is that we actually recalculated every year on the full three years going back. So for example, 2021 is coming up. 2021 should be based on the three years prior. So that would be actually 2016, that's a full year. There were some strange things that happened in 2017 and 2018. That was a period of time when the consultant was here. The consultant had recommended that they stop tracking time in the computer system and do some things manually. So we have as a full set of data from the first half of seventeen and the second half of eighteen. So we, in the committee, we've come to call that our franken year. Okay, so that encompasses, so 2016 is a full year, 2017, eighteen are franken years is a full year, 2019 is a full year. 2020 is not complete yet, but I do show numbers there that cover January first to June thirty to show six months you have as a frame of reference. So if you look at, for New Freedom Borough, in the second column here, for 2016, you'd have a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight minutes out of a total of four hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three minutes of obligated activity. That represents twenty-four point three three percent of time. So the percent time is the third row for each of these year blocks. If you look at 2016, you've got twenty-four point three three percent franken year, you have twenty-eight point six two percent. 2019, you have thirty-one point one nine percent, which means that if we would switch to, not necessarily switch, but clarify what's actually going into obligated activity for, you know, looking at the full three years, you have an average time for those three full years of twenty-eight point zero five percent. Your current PPU's, you're paying thirty-one point one. Your current PPU's, you're paying thirty-one point one-six percent. So, what I'm really here to look for is some feedback on the idea of splitting that cost or that obligated activity time being defined based on the actual time that's been used in your municipality for activity where an officer needed to respond. It's not patrol, it's not admin, it's not training, it's actual obligated police activity, which really tracks with what we have in the current contract. It simply clarifies it, so that way we know and we can see it and track it a little better. When, when the PPU system was created, it was based on a superset of the obligated activity, which was the UCR Code One and Code Two, the, the more serious crimes and things that were responded to, and it was called incidents. Um, and if you look down through the list, and go through all the numbers, at the end of the day, it looks like Shrewsbury Borough, um, has a three-year average thirty-two point seven-two percent, we're currently paying thirty-four point two. Um, New Freedom, their average is twenty-eight point zero-five, they're paying thirty-one point six. Glenrocks' average is nineteen point five-two, they're paying fifteen point seven-one percent. Stewartstown's average is nineteen point seven-one percent, they're paying eighteen point ninety-three percent. The goal of the exercise wasn't to determine who is or isn't paying fairly or unfairly, and it also wasn't to develop a mechanism based on the data, it was, let's see what the data has so everybody can understand what we're looking at. And the definition in the current contract is fairly clear, it's obligated activity. The idea would be to just clarify that for all members and to see if, you know, that's in line with what people's expectations are. The, uh, the next thing is obviously the long-term obligations. Those are, there's still information that needs to be had to turn, to determine what they are, but the information that we have from the Pension Office, the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System, is that those long-term pension obligations are there for the entity that owns them. Um, the current contract says that if you're withdrawing, you are responsible for long-term obligations that are created while you are a member.
The current contract says that?
The current contract says that, correct.
So, if Glenrock withdrew right now, they'd still be responsible for?
Correct. But we, we don't have a number to put to that at this point, we really need to work with the Finance Committee to determine what that is and to actually list it out, so that way, if there is a point in time that any of us, any municipality wants to withdraw, everybody understands that this is what your long-term costs are gonna be going out, uh, and it's really through the lifetime of all officers that are, um, those, that those long-term financial obligations represent during retiring, until that obligation's no longer there, until obviously, until the officer passes away, you're no longer, you're no longer paying to retire. So, that's what needs to be clarified. Other ideas that have been proposed, um, is that in our original agreement, it was stated that the mayor is to be one of the municipal, one of the principal members for a municipality. That's because the mayor has, uh, some specific public safety tasks and duties that are outlined in Borough Code, but the, um, but the, the language that we're looking at is that the mayor would be a preferred member, you know, preferred representative from a, from a municipality council, will still decide if they want to or not, but if the contract was stated that the mayor's preferred, it'd be up to the, you know, council to say, we still appoint who we want, but, um, should have a reason that you don't appoint your mayor. And also, two, to limit direct contact with the department to commission member or the mayor. That way, you know, the chief has four municipalities, four boroughs that each have a seven-member council, that's twenty-eight council people, uh, four borough secretaries, uh, two school districts. That's a lot of different people. The idea would be to just funnel that through, you know, similar to what we have here with representative government, you have a representative that's a, a representative in your municipality with the department, communication should go through that. Those are the main points, that's really where we are with the IGA, uh, what the IGA committee's been doing, that's what we're looking to suggest and we're looking for feedback.
Does anyone have anything? I mean, go ahead.
We, in the previous IGA that was being created before, we always got a copy of what was being thought of, the actual contract, the actual document, the actual statement. Is it not possible for us to get access to that?
We, we, we have, every municipality has a copy of the current contract. We do not have, uh, any of these ideas written down into a red line, any type of, uh, new agreement to be passed out yet.
That is where we are right now.
So, that's what we're looking to get, feedback from the municipalities, see if this goes, because the way the current, the way the contract was written is, you need all four member municipalities to approve changes for them to become effective. So, why go down the path of drafting things up in the agreement if it's something that is not going to be received favorable? So, what we're looking to do is get some feedback on, does that make sense to you? Is that the way you'd like to see it go?
But you, but.
Though we both, we do not have an agreement at this point to pass around. And it was requested, Glenrock had requested a timeframe to an agreement at the, at last week's Police Commission meeting.
Yeah. Um, I mean, this has been going on for like a year now, right? September of nineteen?
Uh, we actually started in January of nineteen. Um, one of the municipalities had, uh, somewhat absent participation. Another one of the municipalities had, they were at about fifty to sixty percent of meetings, didn't have a lot of discussion. I think for the longest time, Mr. Merrill and myself were the only ones there, we, you know, a lot of different things were discussed. There was actually a draft agreement that was passed out at the end of nineteen. Um, there was no feedback.
I guess, I don't see how council can really do anything until we get a red line copy of the original contract. Everything you've said makes sense to me.
But, but we're looking for is feedback on that type of way with the formula, instead of that three-year rolling average computed every two years, to go three-year average computed every year. We still need the data on the long-term obligations to really be able to even put them into a draft agreement, so that we have those, but that is our next thing that we're gonna be working on.
I mean, as soon as you get the data, I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't have a red line version of a contract, we don't know what, we don't know what we discuss from.
I, I'd like to hear, we have, we have an ex-councilman here who spent a lot of time on the IGA, I'd just like to hear if Bruce has any particular, specific comments or suggestions or feedback, because he, he spent a lot of time on there.
Yeah, Anne is correct, it was thirteen months ago or so, I sent out a red line version to all the council members, and I don't remember if I included Tanya in it or not. But anyway, Anne, I, I provided, so it would've been you, Danny would've got it, Dave would've got it, and Anne would've got it. Couple months ago, Mayor Butcher asked me for the copy of that, and I emailed that over to him as well, so that is the last thing that, you know, I distributed regarding that. Uh, everything that Mike has mentioned is, is basically encompassed in there. There were a few other things that I had included in that red line thing that you might want to think about and putting in there. Some of them had to do with, you know, not just the long-term obligations in terms of your, um, you know, municipal retirements and, and that, but you may recall, those of you who were on board at the time, we had, looking at getting an, an audit or command and doing appraisal of all the fixed assets that, that were there. So, there were addressed, I think we addressed in that red line copy that I provided, some thoughts about, do you, you know, if you're going to go after those assets, how you might do that and what should be in there. There was also questions that you might want to think about. I know the mayor has, you, part of your outreach program, one of the things you originally wanted to do, I think, is, is enlarge the police department, get more membership in it, looking to the townships and the like. The question that I thought about and, and rolled into the copies that I provided, you know, a little over a year ago, was how are you gonna manage that? Uh, you know, who, you know, you've got somebody who's gonna pay us, we might be thirty percent, and then somebody, a bunch of other people that may only be in the sort of the five percenter type stuff, as we saw at the time with like Winterstown Railroad. Um, do you want those people to be members as well? Should everybody be a member? Or, and if so, does everybody get the same vote? If you're paying thirty percent and somebody else wanna be twenty-five percent, how do you do that? And if you grow the department, as the mayor wanted to do, is there some way that you necessarily want to restrict, you know, the membership in terms of people who are members, who are voting members? How do you do that, uh, without having this thing turn into a United Nations thing? Um, I think some of those things might be useful for you to look at and think about, not only what changes that Mike has brought forward to you, but things you might want to think about that probably oughta go in there. So, I mean, uh, that's, that's where, where the issues that Mike brought up are things that we identified very early on, the idea of, it never made sense to me, but then when that thing got popped out, you know, back in, when the hell was it, Danny? I mean, it came out as one last-minute thing, like in twenty-seventeen or something, I think Jeff Allen didn't push it out, you know, a few hours before council meeting, but the idea that you take a three-year average, but update it only every two years, means that you don't count all your years evenly. I mean, there's years that are dropping out, so, I mean, it was just not, not well thought out, some of that. And to the extent of the, the idea of all the PPU's, the idea that Mike is doing is what I think we've advocated, to look at what the actual usage was. I mean, I think it was fourteen or fifteen months ago at the Police Commission meeting, the chief himself said that this PPU system, despite of the fact that he's got a board and he contracted, oh, yeah, your numbers are right, is that it really doesn't work, which, if we had really thought about the PPU system, some of us did before we adopted it, you realize that it was born out of Northern York Regional. They have fifty-five people on their police force, so if there's any horse trading to be done with PPU's, there's probably a good chance you can do it, and even if you can't do it, on any given year, you've probably got one or two people that are going into retiring with that number of people, so if somebody wants to decrease stuff, you can. When you've got a police department that isn't really driven by PPU's, but rather by a minimum staffing requirement for the officer's safety, is, you know, and public safety, you can't really be trading PPU's, it doesn't exist. We took a hit two years ago, I won't go into that now, but we lost an officer because of a backdoor way that Glenrock wanted to calculate their, their costs. So, uh, going back to looking at historically, how much police service did you get? That's your share going forward. And updating that over three-year average, which is what the finance, or the Formula Committee back in twenty sixteen, we stood up a Formula Committee that met in here for about five or six months, and what we looked at was, you know, yearly variations, and what we saw was that if you took a three-year average, yeah, you sort of had a little undulation sometimes in costs, but there were no big spikes that would cause, you know, hardships on communities. So, we could even it out, you pay your three years, uh, and that made more sense. There were people who were concerned at the time about, gosh, you know, uh, you know, you get a new housing project comes in or whatever like that, you know, if you look at how long it takes to get one of those things going, look at Franklin Square, you know, Freedom Green or whatever, it's about two or three years, so that if you start working on a three-year average, by the time that thing gets done, you're, you're pretty much getting it worked into your cost basis already, as opposed to saying, well, five years would really be doing it, but then you got a couple of years when it's never been included anyway. So, the three years looked like a very good compromise, so I would encourage you to go along with that, updating it every year, it takes out the spices, we saw it. What we did find, um, if you look at the chief's reports, going back years before we ever got into the PPU's, he would issue a report every month, uh, and on it, he would, you know, tell you, you know, how many hours your, your community got, and he had what he had was administrative time. And so, that was, you know, whether the officer was on vacation time, bereavement, training, all these other things that were in there. And so, quite honestly, whether you go through it like Mike is doing and try to pick every one, or just through the process of elimination, you know, the chief had it all for administrative time, so everything else, you're gonna get charged for. And what the Formula Committee found was that we didn't know at the time, was that the chief could actually differentiate, in that time you were getting charged for it, that was both these obligated times that Mike was just talking about, as well as patrol. And so, what we felt, you know, a lot of us on that Formula Committee at that time said, you know, leave it happy to just look at the obligated time, we know we need a minimum amount of officers for the safety, and we leave it to the chief to use his judgment in terms of where to put those patrols to help fight crime, and we all agree that that's the chief's responsibility, we're gonna pay for the, based on a percentage of the actual, what we're now calling obligated time. So, uh, I would encourage you to accept what Mike has had and then give some additional consideration to some of the other management aspects about, do you really want to have contract communities, or do you think everybody should be a member with skin in the game? So.
Yeah, I think the only thing to add to that, from my perspective or from my thoughts, would be that if someone's at some percent, I don't know, draw a line and say, and five percent, that's, they're just buying services. But once they get over, again, you're pick a number, fifteen percent, then maybe they have to become a member.
And, yeah, and that, that has been discussed.
And then they get a vote.
Yeah, that, that has been discussed, and I'm sorry, I forgot to include it, to have a minimum threshold.
Right.
Where at some point you become a full member, and then also with regard to contract communities, that a community that you're contracting to should not pay less than, than our rate of a member now.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I was saying. I think that's a shitty thing.
Yeah, towards that end, in the markup that we had, I think there was something in there, I think I already included it in that, Mike, if you remember, that, for example, the schools get charged in a different way than your member communities do right now.
Correct.
And while I, I don't particularly like that, my only point would be, if you want to treat ones differently, whenever you want to admit a new contract, it should go back to the council members to, but done on a comparative basis. So, if this community that wants to join were treated like us, this is what we would, they would pay, but if we want to treat them differently, this is what they would pay, and then you would all know whether or not you want to make that trade, because that really wasn't done, and that's what started the crux of this whole fighting, probably what, ten, eleven, twelve years ago, when contract communities were having their hours and their rates calculated differently than the member communities. And that's what the Formula Committee then found out, like, four or five years ago, was that the actual contract rates at the time were something like a hundred and nine, a hundred and ten dollars an hour, based on whatever actual obligated time hours we used in that year, but yet the contract communities were being charged something like sixty or sixty-five dollars an hour, so, there you have it.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, thank you. I think probably when we get the red line copy, you should be one of the people looking at it too, if you, if you would do that for us.
Sure. If you would like to see the red line copy that was circulated thirteen months ago?
Yeah, Tanya has it.
I think I have it.
Yeah, Butcher has it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I have it.
Sure, you know, the tolls. And then you'll have it, that as a baseline to start in a minute. Okay, uh, solicitor?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, uh, committees, police commissioner?
All right, um, Gail's been getting some more numbers in. Uh, we did get our state pension aid that came in at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, which she had estimated a hundred and thirty-three thousand, so we were only five thousand, uh, under that. Gail and the chief were finishing up some paperwork that they were gonna submit to the county for federal grant money, that's for the COVID-related expenses, and it would include money that we might've lost to the schools when they closed. Uh, the chief reported that New Freedom is now up to seven vehicle arsons or arson attempts in the past year. Uh, they're occurring between eleven PM at night and three in the morning. He has implemented extra patrols, and he's asked us to report any suspicious persons to the police.
Where are they, Darrell?
Uh, he, the only one that was mentioned was, uh, South Charles and Bond, and that was in late September, but I think since then, we've had two more.
We had one up at Marge Goodfellow's old house, uh, right across from the fire hall, and we had two in the parking lot at Pizano's, and one other one, I think, is under investigation, and they're really not putting out, since it's still under investigation where it is.
And then, he mentioned that there had been attempted car break-ins in Shrewsbury Borough and Stewartstown, and then MSP had also been investigating some in Shrewsbury Township, um, so he did remind everyone to lock their cars. And, um, as far as the budget, the Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow night, and I'm told that Gail is planning to do a complete review of the budget with us, and as soon as I get that, I'll forward it to you guys.
What time's that, maybe?
Seven o'clock, chief's conference room. And that's pretty much all I had. And that was pretty much all I had.
Erica? IGA? I'm sorry, did anyone have any questions about the police commissioner? A minute?
A few things for the Red Council.
Okay.
So the former markets been canceled for the rest of the year. But they are looking to start revamping that for sometime next year. I don't believe they have a date set, but they are looking for new vendors. They had asked for a skate park. I know we kind of touched on this earlier, but I think they wanted something more like an actual skate park with ramps and stuff like that. But I think we had talked about that last month. That puts us in a different insurance.
I don't think you can get insurance. Herman won't insure them.
Okay, that's, that's what I told him, it would be a big issue, but they, they were asking if we could.
I think, I, I mean, I said it kind of tongue-in-cheek, but I think it'll do a lot if we put in a pad where they can at least have someplace they know they could come down the street and go on and do whatever. Try to keep us at a low risk, just not, you know.
Okay.
Do whatever you're going to do here under, under own risk.
Yeah. They did, it was some, excuse me. After we talked about it at the last council meeting, about the, the additional playground equipment and location. So now that we have a potential location, I'd let them know. They are, they're of course looking for new members. One that was, I think in the process of joining, has, has backed out. I think there are three members now? I think that's what they were.
I thought we had four.
Well, that was the one backed out.
Well, no, we had five?
I don't think so.
And I think you only had four.
I think there are four.
Yeah, so I think there are three, I think there are three right now. So they are looking for additional members. And then you already touched on the, the tennis signs, and if we have them, and making sure that they're all, all licensed. That was all.
Any questions for Red?
Yeah, for some reason, we just can't seem to get those signs on those other two doors. So my suggestion, either we put signs up, or we just keep the locks on them. And they have two other access points.
We'll have something to say. Can you hear me? It's on. Last meeting, I think it was last month, I was interested in an emergency plan for our borough. So what I did is I called the Red Cross, I called the Salvation Army, spent a lot of time with them, you know, trying to get an outline of some sort of an emergency plan. Then I was given Mr. Rodney Womack's telephone number. And he said, yes, the borough has indeed an emergency plan, however, it is not updated. This was three weeks ago. So I spoke to him a little bit, and I said, would you please, and he's working on updating it. It was three weeks ago. And I said, well, would you please send me a copy and also Tanya? He said Tanya had a plan, but it's not updated.
Yeah, as the EMS director, it's his responsibility to update to the county and the state. I had the last plan in there.
I went to that. So did he send it to you?
No.
So, okay. He didn't send it to you. I said, send it to Tanya. Didn't want to step on anybody's toes. And I said, I would like to see it because I wanted to work on it. I did a little bit of that when I worked at Womack Army Hospital, you know, for Fort Bragg. And I was just interested to see what we have, what sort of a plan we have. Because I think we're living in a time that this borough, we need an emergency plan. We're getting into the winter and, you know. I was concerned. I said, I would like it to include, you know, water. Because the Red Cross said, you know, they will be so busy that it's sort of our responsibility. So anyway, that is where I'm at. On that, I'm not giving up on it. But I'm waiting to, I'm waiting to see an updated plan.
I, I sent me one.
Well, that's interesting, because I said, you know, Tanya should get it, I should get it, and every borough member.
Yep, I have.
So what does it say about the water and the blankets and?
Well, I can't read the whole thing. It's like the hundred and seventeen pages.
No, because he was going to get back to me, and I assumed, you know, that was going to happen, and it never did. But I'm not giving up on it, because I, I really think, I think in these times, it's an extremely important thing, that we need to have an, an emergency plan in place. What, what do the rest of the members think here? Do you agree with me?
Especially with the year we bought this year.
Yes, yes. So anyway, that's where I'm at. That, I'm sorry to take up the time at this late hour.
No, 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 I have a copy. You know, it hadn't been updated in our office.
Yes.
It had been updated at the fire hall. I guess they figured if they have one, we don't need a duplicate here. And he was informed that we do need a duplicate, so I have a copy that he sent to me last week. Because I had talked to him about that.
Because I think it needs to be gone over, and, you know, once we work on it, maybe I get some people to help me, then we can present it and we can see what we're going to do with it.
Well, the, the EOC plan is completely, is different than what you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
You're looking at having an emergency station set up with Red Cross.
And that's what the Red Cross said. The Red Cross gave me, actually gave me his name.
Well, and then.
That he was, that he was a representative. But see, unless I, unless I see, unless I study it, I'm going, going to do that and look at it, and I'm going to see, you know, where we're going to, where we're going to go with it.
Well, I can try, but it doesn't translate real well, because it was a Word document, and it kind of merges two lines.
See, I was stressing, I was.
So I'm going to try to straighten it out.
My interest was actually, you know, the water, blankets and things like this, because they said they, they wouldn't be able to, you know, of course, in a big, big emergency, you would call the military out, and they would help. But I mean, I would, I'm just laying the foundation. I would like to go further with it.
Yeah, I agree.
If that's, you know, acceptable.
Yeah, there we go.
But you are still working with Red Cross? I mean, they.
I, I spoke to them, and they said, really, Ms. Andrews, it is the responsibility of the, you know, talk to the borough officer, the manager. They, they should have, have something in place. And then you can get together with, with that situation, with the mayor, and we can come up with something specific. Like, you know, do you have a, a manager to do that? Do you have different people in different areas, like slider estates and different areas that would be in charge to organize people in a real emergency? That's what I'm looking for.
Mike, who is your, your EOC? Stan, what's Stan's last?
South Social Emergency Management Agency.
Yeah, but what's his?
Stan Walters.
Stan Walters.
Stan Walters?
Stan Wa, Stan was supposed to be here several times. We got hit with COVID. He was scheduled two different meetings. And we had to cancel just because of COVID.
Do you have his phone number or something?
I, I, I get it.
Do you have it? I'll get it.
Well, what we did is we, Stan was one of our council members. He's well-versed in emergency management. And the borough's emergency management plan came due, Stan had actually redone it. But we are with Shrewsbury Township, Glenrock Railroad. And Shrewsbury Borough are all members of South Social Emergency Management.
That's Jacovas too, isn't it?
Don't believe Jacovas is in there.
I was thinking Jacovas.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm interested in getting that.
Okay.
I think we need to all get together and have it, have a really good plan in place.
I can get, I'll get his contact information over to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Trick or treat is October thirty-first, from six to eight. If the lights are on, then you're an active treeder, so.
How about, I'm sorry, how about Christmas tree lighting?
I don't have anything.
That Freedom Green. Are we going to allow them to?
Yep.
Right? Lines does that crack?
Yeah, one to one, that's all the lines.
Okay, that's what I thought, because they're, they're unsure whether they were allowed or not.
Ordinance for water. Andy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Trick or treat, are we to come to the door, or the kids expecting us to come to the door, and we just put it out?
Well, what I was, I, what I was recommending, I think what we're going to do is we're going to have a glove, and we're not going to let the kids reach into the bowl. And we're going to put them into, into the, into their baskets. Some people are putting a little slide thing in, the treat slides on. Some people are just lining it up on the porch, so you only touch the ones you're taking. So I just use whatever good precautions that you can do. The CDC has said that it's very low likelihood of transfer on a packed candy package.
Right, but we're not doing, coming through the door and opening the door at all, that's, that's. Well, that's up to you.
Yeah, that's up to you.
You feel comfortable with it.
Okay. All right, so the water use for first five thousand gallons of metered water is fifty-seven dollars. Has anything changed? Yeah, sorry? But do you think? Yeah, that's the only thing that's changed, right? The cost per gallon, access hasn't changed.
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance number twenty-two-three. That's written.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Questions?
This is the one we talked about last month with the, it's the first time it was raised, but York Water had raised it three times?
Right.
Yeah, year before that, you were quarter raised it eight times to us, so.
Yeah, it's actually not a large, it's not a large.
It amounts to eight dollars a year.
Yeah. Fortunately, we don't use a lot of York water. And we did, it would be a bigger increase.
I would use it yours.
Yeah. My vote is aye.
Yeah, you have to sign, and you have to sign in back. That's four. You got to change the copy.
Sorry. All right, this is ordinance twenty-twenty-four, and this is for sewage. And the rates per quarter are sixty-nine dollars and eleven dollars for one thousand metered water over five thousand gallons. Anything that changed, is the thing. Yeah, the only thing's changed, yeah. And that was changed for how much?
Three dollars.
Three dollars.
I made a motion that we accept an approval in its number twenty-twenty-four.
For now, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Which brings us to public comment for non-agenda items.
Andy, I just have a question. Are we still trying to get the draft minutes on the website? Because they're not being posted, and it's kind of frustrating from one month to the next.
I think they've been posted, except for this month. I know that the, Mr. Naylor had been on vacation. He had told me he thought he could do it from being down south. I've sent them to him three times this month. And I haven't heard back, so I'm assuming he is still on his two-week. He was doing a cruise and going down south. But your other draft minutes have all been posted.
Yeah, and, and just, just to answer that question further, the, I think that when the new borough manager comes on, since he's first in the website design and management, I think we'll probably bring that in-house. And then we won't have to send something out and wait for somebody else to put it on, see that it's not on. I mean, we've got, we've had like three emails back and forth, like, where are they now? I don't know, he's supposed to be, you know. So this way it'll be in-house, and, and we'll be able to make sure that that's taken care of. Does that answer it? Sorry, but I apologize, I really did.
I had expressed to Tanya several days ago about that same subject on not being on there. But I asked my wife about it, and she said, no, they're on, you know, they're, they're on the site. So I looked again on my phone, and I couldn't find it, so I went on my iPad, and there it was. And what I found out, it is on, it is on my phone, but the color that, for the month, runs into the background.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
And you can't read it unless you enlarge it real large, you can just barely see it. So that's, you know, they're, they're on there, and they have been on there the whole time, I guess.
Now, that's the work, that's the budget workshop minutes, not the, it's not the actual minutes.
This is the regular council meeting events that.
On September, for, for September's meeting.
September wasn't on yet, right?
No, that's what I'm talking about.
What it, what it would be put on.
They're posting the.
No, they put draft ones within a week after the meeting.
This is the first time.
This meeting is supposed to be on there.
Okay, August, right, yes, you're right, August draft was the last one. So I couldn't find any of them, because they blended in the colors on the, the thing, or whatever.
Yeah, I had that same problem. I found you're better off, if you really want to see it, go to a computer. Your computer screen shows up differently than your iPhone screen.
I, I don't have one, so.
I've had, saying to Tanya, where is it? Where is it? She's, it's here, I'm looking at it. And I couldn't see it, because it was yellow, on white or something like that.
It was me.
I couldn't find, I couldn't find, I couldn't.
Yeah. Anything else?
Do, um, do we need to let the folks know that probably our upcoming council meetings will be on YouTube?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
Dave, since he's got a background in, what do you call that?
Computer ecology.
Computer ecology is, is volunteered or re-volunteered him. We, we said, at the beginning of the year, we were going to make sure that everybody in town, as a resident, has access to council meetings. It's, it's tough for people to come out. They've got kids, they've got sports, they've got dinner. So as you can see, we're, this is our first, hopefully, full meeting that we're going to be recording. Dave is going to post that onto YouTube, and we will have the link on our webpage. We're, it's still a work in progress, so please bear with us. But we feel it's important for all residents, everybody here on council thinks it's important for all residents, you know, to have access to our meetings and what's going on and how they're being represented. So Dave is going to be doing that probably what, the next week, I guess, if.
I talked to the web guy, the, the web here. And I asked him, if I get the link from YouTube, can you, can you put it on next of the minutes? I said, that'd be easy to do, so. And we're going to, and talk to Kim earlier, and we're going to make it public on YouTube. So if you want to search, somebody wants to just search for New Haven Borough, I'll have it out there. I can do it that way, or you can get it from the website.
Either way.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just one thing. Go ahead, my fancy, do you authorize for fire police assistance for the Carolers, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth? You have to authorize it, considering it happens at Sherwood's complex.
Right, yeah, that's.
And I, I will send them a letter back. You should make a motion in a second, and I'll send a letter back.
I'll make a motion that we have a fire police for December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for the Caroler event.
There you go.
A second now.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion if you adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.